Please step up to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the staff. On my far right is Mark Finer, a voting member. Very much so on time. And to his left, we have Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy. I'm chair. To my left is James Moss, vice chair. And to his left is Nick Haney. And then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, office assistant. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will then be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and speak into the microphone. It will not amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And before we start, we have a time if anyone wants to come up and make a public comment. Richard? I guess we have no takers. And the other thing is tonight, all hearings are closed, so there'll be no, nothing from the public. All right, let's get our agenda. First up at bat, we have Habitat for Humanity. And that's a decision. Take it away.
So through you, Madam Chairman. Just asking for the purpose of the record if the board has reviewed the procedural history, letters, emails, information from applicants representatives, emails from town departments, emails from butters or interested parties, plans submitted. If there's any changes that need to be made?
That noted.
On page four, under findings. Number one, according to the last published subsidized housing inventory, SHI issued by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, dated August 27, 2024, prior to the submission of this application, the town of Falmouth had 10.01% affordable housing, which included a filed approval for 300 rental unit comprehensive permit on July 29, 2024. The town also has an approved housing production plan current through March 28, 2029. Two, at the opening of the hearing on June 12, 2025, Ms. Murphy made a motion. Should that be Mrs. Murphy?
No.
No? Ms. Murphy made a motion, which was seconded by Mr. Peterson and unanimously voted. I move that the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals has the grounds to declare that a denial or approval with conditions of the application is consistent with local needs as defined in general law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 and 760 CMR 56.031A and 3A, because the town's subsidized housing inventory exceeds 10% and further under 760 CMR 56.031B and 4, or municipal compliant with its approved housing production plan and provide the requisite 15-day written notice following tonight's hearing to the applicant and to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Three, the board issued a letter to the applicant by email and certified mail on June 13, 2025, reiterating its stance that the town qualifies for safe harbor based on the certification issued by the EOHLC dated October 21, 2024, where a two-year certification was issued based on the number of SHI eligible units approved in July of 2024. This letter was provided in accordance with 760 CMR 56.038 within 15 days of the opening of the local hearing and included notification to the EOHLC. There was no record of an appeal being filed. Four, the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts Housing Production Plan, HPP, report dated March 2024 referenced the substantial gap between the cost of housing and what residents can afford. Five, the applicant met the requirements to file for a comprehensive permit. The applicant has one, control of the land, purchase and sale letter dated June 29, 2023, amended with plans, date May 24, 2024. Two, the project has been issued a project eligibility letter by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC. Three, the applicant is a nonprofit organization. Number six, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, issued a letter dated December 31, 2024, identifying that the proposed project had received project eligibility under the local initiative program, LIP. Seven, subject site 805 Gifford Street Extension, Hatchville, Massachusetts. The premises currently comprises 176,358 square feet of area sited in the Agricultural A zoning district. The minimum lot size is now 45,000 square feet. Premises is approximately 317.44 feet of street frontage on Gifford Street Extension, the town right-of-way. The minimum lot frontage is 100 feet. Of the larger site, 40,780 square feet will be subdivided for the housing development. Number eight, the premises is sited in a DEP-mapped Zone C Surface Water Protection District, the town's Water Resources Protection District, and the flood zone X. The Water Resource Protection District is to, quote, "promote the health and safety and general welfare of the community by ensuring an adequate quality and quantity of drinking water" and to, quote, "preserve and protect existing and potential sources of drinking water supplies," end quote. Premises is served by town water. There is an N-Star utility easement on Gifford Street. Property of budding the premises includes a commercial landscape business to the south, residential lots to the east, and an undeveloped parcel owned by the town to the north/northeast. Nine, the topography of the full premises ranges from a low point of 26 feet to a high of 56 feet. The area proposed to be subdivided and developed ranges approximately from 42 feet to 54 feet. Ten, premises is currently improved by a 9,570-square-foot commercial building leased by Habitat for its restore. A significant portion of the southerly area of the premises where the residential development is proposed is currently wooded. Eleven, designated 40,780-square-foot area of the premises is proposed to be divided into four single-family house lots, lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, plus one lot for a shared septic system. The new lots will be sited at the easterly end of the larger parcel at the end of the approximately 600-foot private driveway. The lots will have no street frontage but will comply with a 25-foot minimum setback from a street. Twelve, access to the residential development is via existing paved driveway for the restore and easement agreement will be provided access for residential owners. Thirteen, there will be no change to the curb cut on Gifford Street Extension. Fourteen, bounds are proposed at most lot corners for the residential lots except where it would lie in a driveway. A waiver has been requested. Fifteen, the building lots are proposed to range in size from 7,307 square feet to 8,369 square feet. The Agricultural A zoning district requires 45,000 square feet of area for new lots. A waiver of this zoning bylaw provision as to the lot area is requested. Sixteen, Lot 2 will contain the shared IA septic system, drainage and driveway access to four residential lots. The lot will comprise approximately 9,564 square feet and will be a common area within the HOA.
Question. We say Lot 2 and have the word 2. We've referred to lots by numbers, so I think it should be...
A numerical?
A numerical number instead of the word 2.
Okay.
Just for continuity.
Seventeen, the town will not provide curb-side trash pickup nor will it provide snow and ice removal services due to the private driveway access. Where the residential development adds only a small paved area to the existing paved area, plowing is anticipated to be provided as part of the restore maintenance with the exception of the owner's private area. The property owner consented to residents sharing the dumpster with the restore. Does that need to be changed?
No, that's good.
Eighteen, the proposal is to construct four three-bedroom homes that will be solar and EV-ready. Where Habitat selects owners prior to construction, all homes will be adapted to meet the individual needs of the owners. The homes will be tiered affordable ranging from at or below 60% of the area median income AMI to a maximum of 80% AMI. The applicant estimated that 60% AMI homes will sell at approximately 194,500 and 80% AMI homes will sell for approximately $261,900. The proposal involves a total of 12 bedrooms for the development. Nineteen, the proposed habitable square footage for the homes ranges from 1,256 square feet to 1,276 square feet. All units will have basements and a washer dryer hookup. Twenty, the lighting for the development is proposed to be porch lights on each of the dwellings. At the front and rear of the dwellings, no project-based lighting was proposed. Twenty-one, dwellings are proposed to be heated and cooled by electric heat pumps. Twenty-two, dwellings are proposed to range from 17 feet 8 and 5/8 inches, the ranch, to 21 feet 4 and 1/2 inches, Cape and height. The bylaw permits height up to 35 feet. Twenty-three, as required in the bylaw, two parking spaces are shown on each lot. No guest parking was identified on the plan, though there exists paved area for additional parking within the larger property. Twenty-four, a common mailbox is proposed for the development. Twenty-five, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee issued a letter dated March 21, 2024, fully supporting the project. Twenty-six, Falmouth Fire Department has approved the path plan for fire apparatus access. Twenty-seven, the water superintendent reported that the water main needs to be extended from its current location with an 8-inch DICL Class 52 cement line pipe per the utility standards. Each home must have its own 1-inch PE water service with a curb stop shut-off valve located outside of the driveway layout. Each water meter needs to be installed inside the home and not in a crawl space. At the end of the water main in the northeast corner, it is agreed to have the developer install a fire hydrant for potential future water quality issues at the end of the water main extension. Water main installation needs to be inspected by the water department from beginning to end, so please coordinate in a timely manner to allow us to fit this project into our schedule. Please come to the DPW and fill out four water service applications and provide four copies of the site utility plan showing the location of the water main and water service to each new home. Water main extension fee will also be required. Twenty-eight, the Select Board issued a letter dated July 29, 2024, with their vote to endorse the LIP application of the EOHLC noting a local preference for two of the homes. Twenty-nine, town engineering, the town did not require a pure engineering review for this development. Topics reviewed included subdivision regulations, definitive subdivision plan, and layout site plan. Thirty, the planning board referral included the fact that the proposal represents infill residential density, that the yards are adequate, and that the dwellings are appropriately sized. Thirty-one, the housing coordinator noted that all four dwellings would be deed restricted to be at or below 80% AMI and will all be eligible for inclusion in the town's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, fulfilling a town need. Dwellings are within walking distance to the Falmouth High School, a small grocery market, and a future YMCA. Thirty-two, the Board of Health agent noted that the proposal is sited outside a MMADEP nitrogen-sensitive area, but recommended the plan include space for an IA design. The Board of Health will need to review proposed septic systems. Thirty-three, the applicant reported that Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc. has been identified as the lottery agent and will perform annual monitoring with Housing Assistance Corporation monitoring any resales. Thirty-four, 8-foot-by-10-foot shed locations are identified on the plan and will be provided by Habitat.
I move the Board vote to approve the findings, paragraphs 1 through 34, with the change noted in paragraph 16 as read at this meeting.
Second.
Everybody all set with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Does that have to be roll call at the end?
Roll call at the end?
Yeah, the end.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Charlie, continue.
Yes.
Decision.
Please.
Uh, excuse me, strike that. Conditions, general, G1. Where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under MGL Chapter 40B, Section 20 through 23, allowing the override of local zoning density, there shall be no, as of right, changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be submitted, shall be properly submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals as provided for under MGL Chapter 40B and 760 CMR 56. G2, the construction shall be substantially as shown on the plans submitted and reviewed by the board as follows. Definitive subdivision plan, existing condition plan, Sheet 1 of 6, site plan overview, Sheet 2 of 6, dated January 30, 2025, with a final revision date of July 11, 2025. Site plan, Habitat for Humanity, Sheet 3 of 6, details and notes, Sheet 4 of 6, landscape plan, Sheet 5 of 6, swept path plan, Sheet 6 of 6, date July 21, 2025, prepared for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc., 411 Main Street, Suite 6, Yarmouth, Port, Mass. as drawn by J.M. O'Reilly &amp; Associates, Incorporated, 1573 Main Street, Route 6A, Brewster, Mass. Plans are not stamped or signed. Foundation plan, Sheet A 1.0, first floor plan, Sheet A 1.1, front elevation sheet, A 2.1, rear elevation sheet, A 2.2, right side elevation sheet, A 2.4, left side elevation sheet, A 2.3, building section, Sheet 8.30, floor framing plan, Sheet A 4.0, building section, Sheet A 3.0, window schedule, Sheet A 5.1, door schedule, Sheet A 5.2, details, Sheet A 5.3. All plans dated June 25, 2025, three-bedroom ranch. Foundation plan, Sheet A 1.0, first floor plan, Sheet A 1.1, front elevation, Sheet A 2.1, rear elevation, Sheet A 2.2, right side elevation, Sheet A 2.3, left side elevation, Sheet A 2.4, building section, Sheet A 3.1, floor framing plan. I'll get that right one of these times. Sheet A 4.1, second floor framing plan, Sheet A 4.2, window schedule, Sheet A 5.1, door schedule, Sheet A 5.2, details, Sheet A 5.3. All plans are dated June 25, 2025, three-bedroom Cape, lots 3, 4, and 5. Prepared for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Lot Number 1, Jack Delany Road, Dennis, Mass. as drawn by Catalyst Architecture, interiors, 203 Willow Street, Suite A, Yarmouth, Port, Mass. Plans are stamped and signed by Kurt E. Raber, R.A. and swept path plan, date July 11, 2025, with a final revision date of July 21, 2025. Prepared for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc., 411 Main Street, Suite 6, Yarmouth, Port, Mass. as drawn by J.M. O'Reilly &amp; Associates, Incorporated, 1573 Main Street, Route 6A, Brewster, Mass. Plan is not stamped or signed. G3, all stormwater from the premises shall be directed to recharge on the premises. Dry wells shall be added to the plans. The stormwater system shall be operated and maintained privately. G4, the access driveway is private and will remain so. The town will neither pick up trash nor plow. G5, parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle or boat on the premises is strictly prohibited, and this shall be included in the homeowner's documents. G6, the applicant shall provide a pull-off area for two vehicles to the mouth of the driveway, proximate to Gifford Street Extension for parents awaiting school buses. G7, any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved, shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be approved administratively or whether they require a public hearing for an amendment. Changes made prior to approval shall be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the Zoning Board of Appeals may deny the request subject to any unapproved construction be ordered undone. G8, this comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards other than as specifically enumerated in a condition. The Board of Health and Conservation Commission are excluded from this provision. G9, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, is recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone. G10, this permit shall lapse three years from the date of which the decision is filed in the town clerk's office if a substantial use of the comprehensive permit is not sooner commenced except for good cause as determined by the Zoning Board of Appeals. G11, this comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without the express written approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with 760 CMR 56. G12, each condition in the decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant, the applicant's successors, and assignees. G13, the maximum height of the dwelling shall not exceed 22, or excuse me, strike that, 28 feet. G14, construction hours shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Saturday hours shall be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No Sunday or town-observed holiday hours absent emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not park on a budding streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on a butters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean. G15, the development shall be limited to a maximum of four single-family dwellings with a total maximum of 12 bedrooms. Two of the dwellings shall remain in perpetuity affordable to eligible purchasers whose annual income shall not exceed 60% of the area median income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Two dwellings shall remain in perpetuity affordable to eligible purchasers whose annual income shall not exceed 80% of the area median income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The four affordable dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, maintained by the Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC. Basement space may not be used as bedroom space nor may any other rooms be converted to bedroom space. Any increase in the number of bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw and this comprehensive permit. G16, the dwelling shall include an entry and first-floor bathroom with a minimum 32-inch doorway width to provide visitable access. All three-bedroom homes include a first-floor bedroom. G17, there shall be no further division or subdivision of the premises or the creation of additional housing units or expansion of structures without further approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the form of an amendment to this decision. G18, to the extent permitted by law, preference for the sale of 50% of the unit shall be given to homebuyers that are Falmouth residents, employees of the town, employed within the town, or who have children attending town schools. The applicant shall work with the housing coordinator, communicate with the state and shall provide a lottery information for the units. G19, the affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership of units, all of which shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, shall be subject to a regulatory agreement, fair marketing and income guidelines. Units shall not be rented or sublet. Certification of compliance with affordable housing regulations shall be submitted after the sale to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Falmouth Housing Coordinator. This certification shall include documentation that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. The affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity with a use restriction recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, copied to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the housing coordinator, and shall survive sale, foreclosure, or bankruptcy. Any resale of an affordable unit shall be properly managed by an affordable housing specialist and reported in advance to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the town's housing coordinator and shall include the fact that any future owner is subject[1305.35] coordinator, and shall include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein and is provided in homeowner documents. G20. Drainage structures shall be constructed in accordance with the plans, and all roof areas shall be connected to drainage structures. Homeowners shall be appraised of said installation. Maintenance and preservation of drainage structures shall be the responsibility of homeowners. G21. The applicant is a nonprofit organization and shall comply with all applicable EOHLC requirements. G22. The definitive subdivision plan shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. After reporting, the plan shall be provided to the assessor for a new parcel identification. Following the new parcel assignments, addresses shall be assigned by the town engineering. Applicants may inquire about draft addresses. This procedure shall precede the application for a building permit.
I move the board vote to approve general conditions B1 through G22 as presented and read tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Will you please?
Conditions prior to site work. S1. The applicant has stated that this is a private driveway. As such, water lines beyond the road shall be the responsibility of the homeowners. Any required utility easement shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town. The water main shall be extended from its current location with an 8-inch D I C L, Class 52 cement-lined pipe, per the utility standards. Each home shall have its own 1-inch P E water service with a curb stop shut-off valve located outside of the driveway layout. Each water meter shall be installed inside the home and not in a crawl space. At the end of the water main in the northeast corner, the developer shall install a fire hydrant for potential future water quality issues at the end of the water main extension. The water main installation needs to be inspected by the water department from beginning to end. The developer shall coordinate in a timely manner to allow the water department to fit this project into its schedule. The applicant shall fill out four water service applications with the DPW and provide four copies of the site utility plan showing the location of the water main and the water service for each new home. A water main extension fee shall also be required. Plans shall show the location of septic components and water service. Plans shall state, quote, "All standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project," end quote. S2. Prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant, the general contractor, and any necessary subcontractors shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, representative of the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, the zoning administrator, water superintendent, Board of Health, Agent, Falmouth Fire, and Falmouth Police to review soil erosion and sediment controls, inspection requirements and procedures, review of conditions, construction, traffic, traffic management, general project schedule, building permit submission requirements, work hours, and any other pertinent information. S3. The applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when and if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department, or per the applicant's own choice, shall be paid for by the applicant or as determined by the town manager. S4. Construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's 2019 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standards, conditions, which document is affixed herein as Appendix A and with the Zoning Board of Appeals as the permit-granting authority. All uncontaminated stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises. No increase in stormwater runoff from the premises is allowed. Engineering sign-off is required prior to site disturbance and the issuance of any building permit for this project. Erosion and sediment controls shall be installed, inspected, and maintained in good condition at all times. Failure to maintain adequate erosion and sediment control on-site will be grounds for stopping all construction activities on-site until the issue is addressed. S5. The applicant shall have the surveyor stake the limit of work. S6. The applicant shall retain an engineer or surveyor to provide an as-built plan and certification of the driveway and utilities as described in Section 305-12C for review by the Engineering Division before final approval of the project's construction. S7. Proposed site disturbance is less than 1 acre federal and town threshold. The applicant shall provide stormwater management calculations and drainage maps showing stormwater mitigation of the town's design storm, as described in the town's subdivision regulations, Chapter 305. The limit of work shall remain in place until the end of construction. Any damage to the limit of work shall immediately be repaired. The contractor shall be held responsible for maintaining the erosion controls and not impact abutters. Drywells shall be added to the plans, and roof runoff shall be diverted to infiltration measures. S8. The applicant shall provide to the police, building department, engineering, and zoning Board of Appeals the name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed. S9. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, shall be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling property lines shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged or removed without the written approval of both parties. The limit of work line shall be installed prior to site disturbance, and may include adjusting the limit of work to protect root systems of trees onto the premises. S10. The applicant shall confirm the proposed mailbox location with the U.S. Postal Service.
I move the board vote to approve. Conditions prior to site work, S1 through S10, as presented and read at the hearing tonight.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Conditions prior to building permit. B1. The developer shall comply with all water superintendent requirements regarding water lines and shown on the site plan. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief. The applicant shall provide an easement for the water main extension in a form approved by the town. The tap-and-sleeve assembly shall be inspected, including pressure testing, chlorinating, and sampling. The developer shall provide an as-built to the water superintendent upon completion. B2. The certified plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to engineering and the building commissioner for review and approval as part of the application for a building permit. At a maximum, the plan shall show the following. Lot dimensions, driveway limits of pavement, parking stall locations and dimensions, building locations, dimension building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, locations of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas, hydrant locations, stormwater pipe locations, and invert elevations, drainage structure rim and invert elevations, depth, width, and length of stone infiltration beds, including roof infiltration areas, fencing, sight lighting, and the limits of work, which shall also be demarcated in the field. This plan shall serve as the base for his as-built plan of the project upon completion.
I move the board vote to approve. Conditions prior to building permit, B1 and B2, as presented and read here tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Conditions prior to occupancy permit. O1. The applicant shall install a wayfinding sign for 805 to 817 Gifford Street Extension as Gifford Street Extension and proximate to the commercial building. O2. The applicant shall properly post addresses as assigned by engineering in compliance with Section 99-1. Afixing of legible numbers required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. O3. The final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Housing Coordinator prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. O4. Landscaping shall be installed per plan submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any material substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced with similar-sized plants within one year of the final certificate of occupancy. Habitat will be providing a one-year warranty on plantings. O5. The final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all required site work, including landscaping, drainage, or other improvements and installation of monuments, are completed. The developer may request the ZBA consider a bond for the value of incomplete work to ensure that work is completed in accordance with plans. O6. Any drainage to Gifford Street Extension during the construction-
Damage.
Any damage, thank you, to Gifford Street Extension during the construction process shall be repaired to town standards at the expense of the applicant. Good catch, Mark. O7. Prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement to be reviewed by town council. All costs associated with the monitoring shall be borne by the applicant until the sale of the last affordable unit, and thereafter by the sellers of the affordable units. A copy of all financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the housing coordinator after initial round of sales. O8. All dwellings shall have the same general exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans. The dwellings shall be solar and E V ready. O9. A certified as-built plan shall be provided to the ZBA and engineering for review by conformance to the approved plans prior to certificate of occupancy. The plan shall be an overlay on the plan described in Condition B3. Any deviation from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits. The building commissioner shall review and approve this plan and confirm that this plan includes the required information and certifications. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the as-built plan is approved. O10. Dark-skies-friendly lighting shall be provided at dwelling doorways. Spotlights are prohibited. This shall be included in the homeowner documents. O11. The applicant is required to provide, 1, a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project; 2, an affordable housing deed rider specifying that affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity; and 3, a declaration of trust for the Homeowners' Association, if applicable. These collective documents shall be provided to the Zoning Board of Appeals for review by town council prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit, and subsequently recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. A recorded copy shall be filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals and the town's housing coordinator. The applicant is a nonprofit corporation, is limited in its profits under MGL Chapter 40B, and any excess profits shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as required by the subsidizing agency in accordance with the applicable law, regulation, and guidelines.
I move the board approve prior to occupancy conditions O1 through O11, as presented and read here at the hearing tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Waivers. W1. Any waiver not specifically granted herein is denied. The proposal does not comply with certain provisions of the Falmouth zoning bylaw and subdivision regulation provisions. As provided for in MGL Chapter 40B, the applicant has requested the following waivers from those provisions, to which it does not comply. W2. The waiver from Section 247.7B5, the density limitations within the Water Resource Protection Overlay Zoning District. W3. The waiver from Section 249.3, Affordable Housing Development, seeking approval from the ZBA under Chapter 40B in lieu of a special permit from the planning board. W4. Waiver from Section 240-11.2B1, the requirement for minimum lot dimension requirements for lots 2 through 6. W5. Waiver from Section 240-11.2B2, the requirement for minimum lot width. W6. The waiver from Section 240-11.4A2, the requirement for side and rear setback requirements. W7. Waiver from Chapter 305-5, 6, and 11, approval of definitive plan by planning board. W8. Waiver from Chapter 305-14, environmental impact statement. New subdivision is within an existing developed lot. W9. Waiver from Chapter 305-30 and 37. Due to the density in a low-traffic area, sidewalks are not proposed as part of the development. W9A. Waiver from Chapter 305-34 and 43. The subdivision has a shared driveway, and streetlights are required to be waived, requested to be waived. W10. The waiver from Chapter 305-38, requirements of monuments, seeking selected lot corners for any future survey, with monuments shown on the definitive plan. W11. The waiver from Chapter 305-41, fire alarm systems. W12. Waiver from temporary construction signage regulations. W13. Waiver of fees, parentheses, select board vote. W14. Waiver of Board of Health Design 310 CMR 15.000, room for IA no longer needed.
Question. On waiver W9A, the sentence ends, and streetlights are requested to be waived. Does that mean we waive them, or will the action-
Well, they don't have any.
So they've requested a waiver to not have to install them.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. So I move the board vote to approve the waiver, W1 through W14, as presented and voted and read by the board here tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the wrap-up motion. I move the board vote to grant a comprehensive permit with conditions for the construction of four three-bedroom homeownership dwellings, including three Cape Designs and one Ranch Design. Each unit shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than 60% of the area median income, and two units shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than 80% of the area median income, as determined by HUD, H-U-D, and EOHLC, at 805 Gifford Street Extension, Hatchville, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 26, Section 1, Parcel 017, Lot 000D, known as the premises. This comprehensive permit shall be subject to the conditions as voted upon by this board here this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call?
Benner and aye.
Peterson, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Morse, aye.
We're done with that one. Thank you.
Aye, aye.
Fine job. All right, next up, we have 163 Bay Road, North Thomas. Everybody all set on this?
Chair, I read the decision. I'm sure everybody else did, too. I thought no issues with it. I think it was correctly prepared, and it expresses the sentiment of this board, so I move it through.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
I just want to add something to that. There are 15 embayments in this town, and they're all compromised. Like, the next sewer-ing project, and it takes some methodology to correct this. The next sewer project, the homeowners there are going to be paying roughly $40,000 betterment plus installation, and it seems that this, in the case of McGansett, or whatever, these people have to endure the shellfish growing out there because that's their contribution to cleaning up our embayments, and I don't think these people appreciate or understand the science, and I just thought that that stood out during the hearing the other night, and that's lies to everybody.
So we had a motion. Did you second that?
I did. As to the content of the decision, I think the, yeah.
Yeah, not my statement, of course.
So we have a motion and a second. Everybody all set? We're all voting up here, okay? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
Apologies. Minutes, yes.
17 and 24?
17 and 24, please.
I'll make a motion to approve July 17 and July, wait a minute, July 17, 2025, and July 24, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody all set with these?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Then we're going to do 85 Brick Kiln. We had some changes. I think we can just vote them as a whole. Can we not?
I think it's fine. I don't know if the board wants to make a statement to the record where the mediation took place privately because the case is under appeal.
Let us read this paragraph.
That's fine.
Should I read it?
Sure.
Okay. The decision on comprehensive permit, O5, 8, dash 24, granted with conditions, was originally filed with the town clerk on March 20, 2025. The decision. The applicant filed an appeal with the Housing Appeals Committee on April 8, 2025. Parties engaged in settlement discussions and determined that the appeal would be satisfactorily resolved upon approval of the modification as set forth in this document. And then there are 8, 10, 10 paragraphs of amended, let me get my paper clip in there. 10 paragraphs of amendments reflecting finding number 6, finding number 27, condition G8, condition G14, condition G18, condition G20, condition O2, condition O4, condition O5, and condition O9, as set forth in the modification. Remaining portion of the comprehensive permit remains unchanged.
Second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think this is also a roll call, if I'm correct.
If they add one thing?
Yeah, go for it.
I'd just like to say to those who engage in mediation, thank you and good work, and they're doing a good job, once again, trying to uphold the decision of the board.
Fine job. I think it's a roll call, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Benner and aye.
Peterson, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Morse, aye.
All right, moving along. And we have vote two members for mediation for West Falmouth Estates. I would like to nominate Scott Peterson and Tony Pataki, and myself, three. We have a couple of members that are going to, we know that the court is in October, and there are two members that are going to be away for bits of periods of time in October, so I would like to be the backup for those two, if that's okay with everybody. Just in case someone's absent.[1746.21]